I'm going to ask Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to do the invocation today, and Councilmember Alex Montero to do the pledge of allegiance. Yeah, okay, sure.
How about our chamber president, Pat Donaldson?
If you want that, yeah.
If you could do the invocation, please. Thank you.
Okay, everyone stand, please. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we are very thankful for another day. We are very thankful that you are protecting our city, our mayor, our city council, our chief, our businesses, our police department, fire department, and our residents. Lord bless us and keep us and take care of us while we do your work. In your name we pray, amen.
Before we sort of go home, I would just say in the house, thank you for your service. Your hand on your heart and follow with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Manning. Mayor Vargas.
Here. Okay, thank you. We have the proclamations. We have a presentation tonight. Andrew Jared, Mr. Jared, please proceed.
Good evening, Andrew Jared, special counsel. Yeah. There we go. Perfect, thank you. I had the wrong glasses on, couldn't see the screen. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Jared. I'm with the law firm of Collin, Juneau, Highsmith, and Watley. And I've been asked to discuss business improvement districts. So what is a P bid? It's a generic term for a business improvement district. You also may hear the term the parking improvement district or a property improvement district called a P bid. These share a way for cities to collect revenue and then that revenue to be spent on specific purposes to benefit the properties or businesses from which they are collected and overall to benefit your city and its economic development. They are either collected from business or property owners or both, depending on which form of the bid you will use. This is not a new thing in California. Different types of bids go back many decades, but the two primary that we'll be talking about are called the 1989 law and the 1994 law, the years in which they were adopted. There are about 200 bids statewide. There are about 100 that are property based, 70 or so that are tourism based, 30 that are business based. In Los Angeles alone, there's 40 districts. San Francisco has 15, Long Beach looks like they have 11, Santa Monica, five, and then Pasadena, Pomona, Glendale, Burbank each have several. And City of Torrance has one that is currently pending. You may have seen going to some of these places what bids look like. Out on the street, you'll see folks typically in a very clean and casual uniform, mostly doing some sort of community service, either cleaning up trash that's around, helping folks get oriented to destinations, or providing security services. They also do various things like graffiti removal and fund transportation alternatives, do parking management, homeless outreach, and general marketing of the city as well. So the way that a bid is created is created by the city through an official act. Typically, a consultant is hired. Most cities don't have the staff on hand to specialize in that type of development. It takes usually a series of meetings to scope the what was going to be done, who's going to be included, and then an engineer's report prepared which identifies the location of the bid, its footprint, geographic footprint, and specifically what items are going to be included in the management plan. These are areas are defined, they are not citywide, border to border in a city, they are focused in a particular area. They do not address residential areas typically or at all. The focus is on commercial activity and commercial development areas. The way that the funds are collected is through the tax rolls, so the city does not have to accept money and it's all done through the county. The Owners Association is created. Think of that as an HOA of sorts for the district. It is a separate nonprofit entity. It is not an arm of the city, although the bid is a city program, and so it's a bit of a hybrid there. There are, the Owners Association actually operates and manages the business improvement district through a contract with the city. So it's typically there is a full-time employee of the bid that is available to address issues on a day-to-day basis and manage the various contracts and personnel that work under it. And finally, the formation costs of the business improvement district would be included in that first year's budget, so this becomes net revenue or net cost neutral to the city in creating this. As I mentioned, there are these two main laws, the 1980, the parking improvement area law of 1989, the 89 law, and the parking and business improvement district of 1994, the 1994 law. They are similar in some ways, but do have some differences. Where are we going here? There we go. The 89 law is an assessment only on businesses, whereas the 1994 law can be an assessment on businesses, properties, the real property, or both. In the 94 law, there can be no assessment on properties zoned solely for residential or agricultural use. In each of these, it's essentially a self-assessment, not city assessments, because the members of that district that's created vote effectively whether or not to join. It doesn't mean that when they vote, they opt in, but there is a voting process that happens in the form of a protest ballot. And the majority of businesses, actually the majority of assessment dollars is how the votes are cast, and with that, the city council can then create this district. The idea of the district services is to augment currently existing services, not to replace them. Some cities have had a contract back with the district as a contract back with the city to provide additional police services for security, and in doing so, you need to set a baseline of how much patrol has happened in that district, and then the added district security services can augment that already existing services being provided. Typically, these districts are created for a term of 10 years, and then they can be renewed after that. And in the process, there needs to be a definition of what activities are going to be done during that time period by the district in what's called the management plan. With each of these, there is, like I said, the protest vote. They differ slightly. With the 89 law, the city council can start the process, establish it through resolution of intention, then through a public hearing, and a very short notice period for the 89 law. And then when the vote happens for this, it's a written protest vote of 50%. 50% or more of the assessed payors vote against adopting this, then the city cannot go forward with the formation. With the 94 law, again, it's a written petition by owners, and if there are 50% or more paying the assessment, then again, the city cannot proceed. The 94 law, there is a prohibition on a single owner rule, so to speak, where a person paying 40% of the assessment, or paying more than 40% of the assessment total amount would not be counted for the assessment formation. And so typically then, districts are formed with that, you know, a dominant property owner having a much lesser amount than that 40% threshold. Some laws that apply here, there of course is the California Constitution that governs, and then the Streets and Highways Code, in which the 94 and the 89 law are both under there. There's also state nonprofit corporation laws that come into effect. And then finally, the very local rule is your district management plan. A lot gets said about Prop 218 and Prop 26. 218 is assessments, deals with assessments against property. 26 is assessments against businesses. And the way that these laws play with those constitutional requirements are that these, there is a specific benefit that will need to be conferred. The language shown there quoted a charge imposed for a specific benefit conferred for a privilege granted directly to the payer that is not provided to those charged, which does not exceed the reasonable costs of the local government conferring the benefit to that privilege. That's an exemption to, under the Constitution, under Prop 218. So that is what would need to be followed in creating the management plan to show that there is indeed a specific benefit going back to each of the properties, each of the businesses that are in this, the district. Typical management plan shows, I took this from one of the plans, I believe in the San Diego area. About 55% of their district plan, the monies were spent on sales and marketing to promote businesses, to promote the area as a tourist destination, and promote activities relating to tourism. About 20% is spent on administration. These are not city costs, the monies from the district that are going to pay city salaries. No, that 20% is going to pay for the district personnel, the people who are putting up the banners, the people who are doing the patrols for litter, the people who are doing graffiti removal, things of that nature, and also the staffing of the management of that. In this particular one, 20% was spent on destination development, which they were describing effectively as public works projects within the district. And then there was a 5% contingency. One of the things to spend the money on are improvements. And so you might have seen this in various tourist destinations you go to, pretty much any of the places in San Diego, the touristy places, those neighborhoods. You'll see things like parks, little pocket parks, fountains, plantings, parking facilities, the promotion of various events through banner programs, murals, ramps and sidewalks, creation of plazas. Those are all the types of things for improvements that can be done. Trash receptacles are a very common one to fund, and the closing, opening, widening, narrowing of existing city streets. We don't know how expensive that can be, and so these types of monies can go towards redoing streetscapes, particularly when outdated models of urban design are no longer suiting our needs. Activities that can be funded include events. Here's one from San Diego, the Pacific Beach area, where they had an event called Beachfest. And it can go towards district branding, identifying a particular area for a specific type of economic development. That can include marketing programs, both general digital media, social media, as well as, I guess if there were other media outlets that one wanted to try as well. And then of course, creating events like concerts, festivals, or special occasions to celebrate. Finally, destination development. This includes wayfinding signage for neighborhoods where you might want to direct people in particular destinations. Infrastructure improvement, again, maybe street lighting and a live music venue, and oftentimes those are used in conjunction with other types of marketing techniques to create a destination feel, something like a blues festival or something like that might become the focus of that type of activity. And then art and cultural projects, again, often to attract overnight guests to stay in local hotels. There are a couple of other types of improvement, economic improvement activities the state has. I can go into those very briefly, but the bid is really the basic form of this. These other types, one is called the Enhanced Infrastructure Improvement District, or Financing District, or EIFD. That is a newer one from about, it was a post-RDA version. It runs a little bit differently, and the focus there is to enhance public works projects within a district. There's one that specialized towards housing called the CRIA or Community Revitalization Investment Authority. But again, that really isn't about economic development, that's more towards building affordable housing issues. And then on the horizon, there's a bill, AB 930, from Laura Friedman regarding Reinvest Infrastructure Sustainability and Equitable Act, and that is to use a slightly different method to have really property tax sharing agreements. So there are a lot of different ways to do things, but right, one of the more common and more basic for economic development at a local level and to reinvest assessments back into the local community are business improvement districts. Any questions?
To the chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Jared. I'm familiar with bids. I've worked in the city of Los Angeles, and I've seen many bids in the downtown area. And I've also seen some not-so-great bids, right? It takes a lot of commitment. I know the city would be the lead agency. I know they'd have to be drafted in articles of incorporation for nonprofit purposes. There has to be a board, there has to be a hiring of a director that oversees that board and hosts monthly meetings, et cetera, et cetera. There has to be buy-in from the businesses with regards to participating in the bid, and there has to be a consensus with regards to the cost of what they are willing to put out to be part of the bid. out to be part of the bid. It's a whole bunch of information and processes, and I'm just curious, just off of our little city, which is, you know, not too big, the corridors would be, I'm assuming, the Hawthorne corridor, which is mainly where all the storefronts and all the businesses are. However, there could be buy-in from other businesses, too. You know, the bigger the better. And then, of course, those, that organization itself would then be hiring contracts for services and programs. It's a, it's a long process. I, I'm just curious on whether or not it could be something that it would work for the city here in Hawthorne. It works in other areas. You're talking ten million people in Los Angeles, you're talking two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand people in each nineteen, fifteen council districts. So that's a bigger animal. I'm just curious on whether or not we would get our money, you know, our buck for our money here in Hawthorne. I'm proud already of the services and programs that we're able to offer, and quickly remedy a lot of concerns, especially with, you know, receptacles and bus benches and things like this, that ultimately, that would be some of the gold. I mean, a little bit of that, too much would be just too much furniture on sidewalk, I think. But again, it's a great concept. I would just have to evaluate whether or not it would be a great fit for Hawthorne's, as it is today. And again, we're growing out our city, we're bringing out good businesses, there's a lot of new businesses in Hawthorne. We continue to grow, and I think as we continue in those efforts, something to look at down the road. But thank you for your presentation, your time.
Certainly, thank you.
Through the chair. Mr. Jared, clarify something for me. So, you know, because we did talk about in the past about this economic development to create these business districts. So it's my understanding that even if we would pass a resolution to create a business district, it would have to have fifty percent of the business to agree, to be partnered with us, correct?
It's actually that fifty percent, or less than fifty percent of the businesses don't disagree. It's, it's a protest vote. So you would hold a hearing, and then people who were against you adopting, creating the bid, if more than fifty percent in assessment value showed up and filed a protest, then you could not
Could not do it.
Do the action. And that's where, Councilmember Glush is right, that the getting buy-in is key.
Yeah.
And, and right sizing the assessment amount is key. Because you could come in and pave your streets with gold and try and impose that on, on business owners, and you would have massive protests. But if they see the value in what you're, what the, both the city and the proponents of this would be proposing, and see the value and the return on that investment, then these, these votes come in with very lesser protest votes.
Yeah, because, because when we were talking as part of the Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee, the business district could, could have been maybe Imperial Highway, right, to develop that corridor to be more, per se, attractive to more hotels, right, at high-end hotels, because what's coming up down the pipe in, you know, the World Cup and the Olympics.
Right.
So most of those people would have to come and protest, and if they're more than fifty, we could not do it. Okay, but thank you very much for your presentation, I appreciate it.
Certainly.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just one more, real quickly. In the experiences that I've had with bids, you have boards that have behaved badly and are starting to, you know, interfight in the, in the board. And because of these types of relationships, you know, the board gets dismantled. And then you have the IRS coming down on them, right, sending them notices. They owe the IRS, because they're a nonprofit organization, there's an annual fee for that, which is eight hundred dollars yearly. There's businesses that back out of paying their fines, their, their fair share of fee to be, be a bid member. So there's, there's a good and there's a bad. I've seen some good and I've seen some bad. I'm not saying that would happen for Hawthorne. What I'm saying is, we would have to have lots of buy-in, and we'd have to just select where we could potentially have that type of inclusive buy-in, where everybody could benefit from it. But I agree with Councilmember Montero that would be ideal, the Imperial Corridor and/or surrounding areas, because at the end of the day, we are budding with Inglewood, Gardena, Longdale, and there are the Olympics, and we have stadiums, we have the sports entertainment here, soccer fields, et cetera. So of course, lots of, you know, to consider, and we're not getting smaller, we're growing bigger. So I definitely am interested in that, and I'm sure, you know, colleagues here, too, as we, as we look more into whether or not this would be a fit for Hawthorne. But thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, for being
Through the chair.
You got a question? I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. So first, I want to agree with my colleagues, you know, this is not something we're sure makes sense for the city of Hawthorne or not, and obviously, it sounds like what's really important would be to get the buy-in from businesses in a particular area. You know, we wanted to ask you to come out and provide this information, because we're always scouring, you know, what's out there in terms of how we can improve our city and how we can spur on economic development, and really understanding, you know, what, what tools exist and what things other cities have taken advantage of. So this is, you know, this is initial conversation, it's my first time really hearing about, about this, which is very interesting. I would love to get more information and further research. I would love to give some more information about the CRIA, see how we can help build more affordable housing in our city. So if you can kind of provide some information to us regarding that, I think that'd be, you know, very much appreciated. And, you know, it sounds like a conversation that we would need to continue with our city manager to really kind of see, you know, how, you know, if it makes sense in our city. But some ideas that came to, came to my mind as you were talking, like hypothetically, let's say the businesses east of Crenshaw on One Twentieth, right, on both sides of One Twentieth, the Lowes, Target, all those, they could, you know, join or create a bid to increase maybe security around their businesses to kind of combat petty theft, for instance. Or maybe contribute to a bid to pay for a annual jazz festival, like our Mayor Pro Tim has an interest in doing, and that could be kind of funded by that, that bid, and that jazz festival can come bring commerce to that area. So that's something that's kind of possible, correct?
Absolutely.
And then, what else? So provide extra security, which is interesting, sales and marketing, I found that very interesting, you know, a bid regardless of where it might be, whether it be on the other side of Hawthorne, where the Home Depot is, and the Costcos, and all those businesses over there could get together and kind of promote that as a destination for shopping, and I would say dining, we don't have a lot of dining over there, but hypothetically, shopping and dining and coming to spend money as a destination, that would be possible as well. I think we have a nice Equinox over there also. So, you know, I find, all that sounds really, really interesting, and then maybe even possibly down Hawthorne Boulevard, you know, the bid could be used to revitalize some of the buildings, is that correct?
There are ways where, where programs like that can be, can be done.
Rehab structures?
There could be ways to do that as well.
And so, I know that's something that, that we are dealing with, with some structures closed down or boarded up, or, or just a kind of disrepair. I know we've been using a lot of city money for some facade improvement projects around the city, but potentially, a bid could kind of help support some of those efforts. So it sounds very, very interesting. I would love, you know, to continue this conversation in our ad hoc committee, and with the city manager, and, you know, you know, maybe we come out and get some more information. But it definitely sounds like it's something that we pursue, it would require a lot of research and outreach to the business community, and kind of see, taking their temperature to see what, you know, see how they felt about it. So definitely appreciate you taking the time to share this with us.
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening.
Oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954 dot three, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and or recommendation.
Okay. Pat Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President, CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. Before I introduce some new members of the chamber, I'd like to remind everyone that July fourth, well, starting on the twenty-eighth, we'll have a fireworks stand on Hundred and Twentieth and Crenshaw. And the money that we raise for that, we're going to buy backpacks with supplies for Corn Bloom for the low-income children there on August twenty-ninth. So that's what the money will be used for. Hopefully, we can get about two hundred backpacks and a lot of supplies for the children. So that's for the fireworks stand, and then the backpack on August twenty-ninth will be the giveout. September thirtieth is our golf tournament, our tenth annual golf tournament, and I want to thank the ones so far that have purchased tables and sponsored tables. And then October, we're going to have a dinner and a masquerade party. I just don't have a date just yet. And then November and December is our Thanksgiving and Christmas turkeys and toys and food giveaway. That takes care of my announcements, and now I have, we have about two dozen people that have joined the chamber, but I'm only going to bring two at a time to the city council meetings. So the first one is going to be Derek, yes, Derek and Emily, and they're with Legal Shield, and they're new members of the chamber, and they're going to tell you in a couple words about their business, and then I'm going to introduce the next business.
Thank you, Patricia. Emilyn Katoa, Los Angeles, California, and I lived here in Hawthorne for a long time, but I am a proud Legal Shield representative here, so grateful for the invitation from Patricia. This is my business partner, Mr. Derek Jones, sometimes feel like bodyguard, but grateful for him. It's kind of hard to, you know, put into two, three minutes, ten years' worth of service with our company and fifty-two years of the company being around, but, you know, obedience is better than sacrifice, so I'm going to go ahead and go with the mission rather than the information, and we'll get information later. But just to share, shooting from the mission, arena of our heart, and what we're here for, our company's biggest mission is to provide equal access to our attorney, to, to the average person, which is basically ninety percent of the population, which is me and him, who cannot afford three, four hundred dollars an hour. We do it through what we call collective buying power, where people pay a dollar a day, and they're able to access our services. We've been, our company has been around for fifty-two years. Our biggest target right now is to be able to provide that for our small businesses. And one of the quickest ways that we can get this service into our, to the hands of the people, which is ninety percent of the population, is basically through the small businesses, the employee benefits. You know, of course, I could go door-to-door, but I don't feel very safe doing that these days. So is that my timer? Oh, okay. So, yes, that's what we do. We help people get attorneys, and we're grateful to be able to serve it, so thank you so much.
Okay, and the next business is Byron and Marvin with Pressure Washing Services.
Good afternoon, everyone. So this is me, my brother Byron. We provide pressure washing services for the city of Hawthorne, Longdale, Gardena, Torrance, anything within the vicinity of Inglewood and up to Longdale. We got into this business because, you know, we, we've lived here for so long. We see sidewalks, you know, trash cans, anything that's dirty, oil stains, we, we pressure wash, we do the sidewalks, driveways, garbage bins. If you guys have ever walked down the city of Hawthorne, sometimes you'll get like a really eerie smell after trash pickup. We take care of all that smell as well. We, you know, pressure wash, we clean up, and that's what we want to do. We want to do something for the community.
We also, we use biodegradables, chemicals, you know, eco-friendly, because it's what we want to do, right? Take care of the communities, make sure that everybody, you know, is safe with what we use, so that's something that we're big on as well.
That's pretty much it. If you guys ever need our services, that's what we're here for. Now, you know, we want to provide those services for the communities, obviously, and we're here for you guys.
Just want to add, you know, we were born and raised, and we've, we're still in the area, so we lived in the same location for thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two years, and, you know, my family is, my new family's also, you know, there. We're still in this area, so we want to make sure that it's, you know, nice and clean and kept for them as well.
Thank you for your service, thank you.
Thank you, guys, welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Michelle Derrick, Holly Glenn.
Hi, Council. I've had a growing concern about Republic Services, and I'm concerned for a lot of reasons, but I'll stay close to my home for the first part. They missed over twenty, almost half of their pickups in the year of twenty-twenty-two on my side of the street, and I'm just one of a bunch of homes. Since then, I've contacted some of the members of the council, and I got some response from Selina, saying that they were opening investigation and all this stuff. I've asked for an audit from the company, they're terrible. My problem is, is that with their delay in my December request for my audit, I've had time to do research, and Republic Services, well, I compare them to Waste Management Company. They're twenty dollars cheaper a month, they have extra pickup, most of the employees have been there for nine, ninety percent of the employees have been there for twenty-five to thirty years. There's a lot of pluses and more bonuses, and it would save the whole city twenty bucks for a pickup. Going a little bit bigger, I did more research, and Republic owns Sunshine Canyon Landfill. There's about a thousand open lawsuits because of all the drainage problems, all the hazardous chemicals seeping into the water, creating kind of a really bad environment for people. They have health issues, they have decreased, they have increased air conditioning, they can't leave their homes, schools are around there. So I don't want to feel bad putting my trash out on my street and hurting people upstream. I don't know what the solution is, but I've lost so many hours complaining to that company, asking for a credit when they're going to wrestle me to the ground for it, for five bucks. But I just don't understand how I can pay full price for half-assed service, and nothing seems to be getting much better, but I just don't want to hurt people.
Ma'am, defined missed scheduling? So they're supposed to pick it up in the morning, but they pick it up in the afternoon, evening?
No, our, our time is two to six. Their customer service closes at five. Their website was pretty shoddy for a really long time. If there was a missed pickup, it had to generally, and it fell within that hour gap, we would have to wait till the next day. And then the other side of the street is Thursday, so now we're having trash trucks in the streets in our neighborhoods five times a week. Waste Management makes their own power. They're powering back to the grid, they're doing all these amazing things, but
Thank you, ma'am. Please submit your, your issue here with the city manager, he has a form. Please submit all your documentation, all your proof, so that we could take a look at that, right? Olivia Valentine, SoCal Gas Care Program?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and elected officials. Olivia Valentine, Hawthorne, City of Hawthorne. So I've been asked to introduce the SoCal Gas Care Program. It's an exciting new program which will really help those struggling to pay their gas bill, and I'm sure it will, it will be beneficial to seniors, especially seniors who are on fixed incomes. Southern California Gas Company is announcing a new program called CARE, California Alternative Rates for Energy, which will allow qualified customers to have their gas bill reduced by as much as twenty percent. There is an online application, and no additional documentation is needed to apply. However, they will contact the individual later on to get further eligibility information. For the application, you only need your account number and zip code for, to, for the application. Under CARE, those experiencing unemployment may apply for assistance on their bill, and for those who are unable to pay, SoCal Gas has suspended service disconnections until further notice. This means that no customer will have their natural gas turned off due to non-payment. Our gas bills have risen astronomically in the past year, and hopefully, a twenty percent And hopefully, a 20% break will be helpful to many people. Just log on to socalgas.com/save money and energy slash assistance programs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Form a line? No? Okay. One person.
How's it going, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and elected officials? I just wanted to go over really briefly the Hawthorne Police Department and the city's effort as we ramp up and we look into the Fourth of July. As you know, that becomes a busy time of year for our city. We love the fact that we still have fireworks legal in the city. However, they do cause quite a bit of issue. And so this is a way that we're going to ramp up this year to do that. At the very footing of our effort is going to be education. As you can see on all of our social media platforms and wherever we go, we're going to have several flyers, both in English and Spanish. I can make these flyers also available to anybody on the council and staff. So you can put it on any of your platforms as well. But it's very, very encompassing and goes over the different types of fireworks and the different dangers. For those that don't take heed with the, the education aspect of it, there are violations that we do have on the books here in the city of Hawthorne. And those fines range anywhere from $500 to $1,000. And those revolve around when, what time, what kind and where, and what you're selling as far as fireworks. Enforcement-wise, the police department is going to tackle it with a collaborative effort with code enforcement. July 3rd, 4th, 5th and 6th, there's going to be extra, an extra, two police officers, actually four police officers, a supervisor and a code enforcement officer out and about to try and handle and deal with all the different legal fireworks, vendors, anybody else that's not following the guidelines that we've set forth. Why we're doing this, those four days, those five days, traditionally, there's always an uptick in calls for service for the police department. From 2022, just for those five days, we're at 1,271 calls for service. In 2023, we're at 1,214 calls for service. Just to put it in perspective and just, just to let you know, as we do get calls for fireworks, we do encourage our citizens to please call and report. As they're being broadcasted, those officers that I just mentioned and the code enforcement officers will be roving around the city, trying to handle all those calls as possible. But as these numbers pile up, please be patient, especially with the community. We are coming. It's just going to take a minute. It's a big influx and a, and a big tap to our resources on our city. And that's all I have. I hope that everybody here enjoys their Fourth of July. And just a quick note, we did participate with a search warrant earlier this last week, sorry, at the end of last week with Gardena Police Department, where we seized 75 tons of illegal fireworks out of a warehouse off Vermont. Yeah, the 75 tons.
How does that look?
I have a video I could show you later. It's quite impressive. However, they estimate the street value of that being anywhere from $7 to $10 million. And that's all illegal fireworks. It was over in the 170th in Vermont in that area over there. I think that's not a stretch to say that just that seizure alone is going to take a big footprint of illegal fireworks out of the area, but it's certainly not going to resolve. But just so you know, we are out there and we're working with our neighbors and our different community members on trying to get this taken care of.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
Can I just say thank you real quick also? And, you know, I was looking at the city of Almonte and I love their slogan. You want to hear it?
I would love to.
Okay. If you like it, we'll write it.
That's pretty good.
A $1,000 fine. Love it.
Something we should adopt.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Next council.
Anyone wishing, else wishing to speak? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. City clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. There are items two through six for your consideration and approval. There will be a presentation on item four, so we will be voting separately on item four. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for June 25th, 2024.
Okay.
Item five, resolution number 8471, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adopting an appropriation spending limit for fiscal year 2024, 2025 in compliance with Article X11B of the state constitution. Item six, resolution number 8475, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the city-county municipal services agreement with the county of Los Angeles for supplemental animal control services for adoption.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Waiting on Angie and Katrina? The votes are in? The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Item four, police?
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, elected officials, staff and residents. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2425. Once again, I'd like to thank anyone, everyone who played part, played a part in the completion of this budget. We could not have done it without all of your support and team effort. Our goal with this budget process is to provide a clear and concise budget proposal to the city council and to develop and maintain a structurally balanced budget that maximizes city resources necessary to build, sustain and enhance the city's future. The overarching theme of this budget has been building for the future. Decisions that are being made today will help maintain sustainability that will serve Hawthorne well in the future. The proposed budget reflects a $2.2 million surplus. We discussed on May 14th at the presentation for the budget workshop that the city is expecting an increase of 13% in the general fund revenue. The majority of this increase is in various categories of tax revenue. These include 1 million in property tax, 2.4 million in sales tax, 2 million in TOT, 2 million in business license, 1.8 million in UUT and new revenues of 700,000 in short-term rental, 2.1 million in cannabis tax, and also an increase in interest of 1 million and VLF of 867,000. And what I'm going to do tonight, we did go over in detail on May 14th, what the budget entails. What I'm going to do tonight is focus on the general fund cash balance, the restricted balances and also the changes from May 14th to this presentation. So we have a required cash balance for fiscal year 2425 of 27.4 million. The fiscal year end 2223 cash balance was 85 million. And in 2324, it was 83 million. These, you'll see, are just the statements for the month of April so that we could present to you the cash balances at April 30th, 2024. The current general fund cash balance at April 30th is 100,746,533. Of that, we have anticipated revenue still for this fiscal year of 14.5 million, but anticipated expenditures of 25.1 million. So we anticipate the general fund cash balance to be at 90.1 million. With that 90.1 million, we also have to remember that we have a required cash balance of 27.5 million. So 90 million sounds like a lot, but we have to remember that we have to keep 27.5 million set aside for emergencies. Okay, and I'm, if, you've had a chance to review each of the departments, so I'm not going to go through each one of them. I'm going to go into the summary page and explain what changes happened from March 14th till today. Okay, so we have, from the presentation that we did on March 14th, we have an increase in the general fund proposed budget of 169,000. That 169,000 is 10,000 increase in council budget for event donations, city council event donations. We have $30,000 increase in city attorney's budget, which was requested by council for the prosecution. We have, in the police department, a $331,000 increase, which is attributed to salaries. In the IT services, we have $130,000 less for salary restructuring. And in community services, we have a reduction of 72,000 also for salary restructuring. So overall, the citywide, the, the city's new proposed budget for the general fund is 109,949,863. And the combined citywide total is 247,741, 247,741,654. Do you have any questions on the departments themselves? We have no changes in revenue. But I can go over briefly what, what we presented at the last meeting. But if you have any specific questions, we can go over those. Okay, so the revenue that we are presenting again for tonight for fiscal year 2425 is 112,204,161. And that is all we have for you today.
Any questions? Okay. I make a motion on four?
Second.
You want to read it?
Yeah, the motion's been made, but go ahead and read it.
Item four, resolution number 8470, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving and adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 for adoption.
I make the motion again? I second. Please vote.
The votes are in? The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. Yes.
To the chair, I just want to say thank you so much, Felice and Vaughn, for your leadership. Congratulations and look forward to more revenue and having even bigger numbers in our next fiscal year. Thank you so much.
Okay. Anybody else? City manager's consent calendar?
Next, we have the city manager's consent calendar. Items seven through 17. Item seven, First Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Building Plan Check Services, First Amendment between the city of Hawthorne City and Lobby Funk and Associates Consulting. Item eight, fiscal year 2024, 2025 blanket purchase orders. Item nine, the nominated members Glenn Grindstaff and Don Harris to fill the Hawthorne Business Private Sector seats on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board that currently are vacant. Item 10, city of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended March 31st, 2024. Item 11, appropriation of 315,000 grant from the Department of Cannabis Control Retail Access Grant Program. Item 12, agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Telehealth Van LLC for the mobile daily virtual telehealth services for the low-income and unhoused residents of Hawthorne. Item 13, progress payment number eight in the amount of 289,858.95 due to Elick Norbelco Electric of Chino, California for Hawthorne Mobility Improvement Project, Phase Two, Project Number 23-01. Item 14, progress payment number 12 in the amount of 174,080.30 due to Elick Norbelco Electric of Chino, California for Highway Safety Improvement Project Traffic Signal Upgrade and Reconstruction, 120th Street Improvement Project Prairie Avenue to Felton Avenue, Project Number 21-06. Item 15, progress payment number three and final acceptance in the amount of 140,970.50 due to Martinez Landscape Company of Solmar, California for Alley Reconstruction, Project 24-06. Item 16, progress payment number four and final acceptance for the second contract year in the amount of 797,303.35 due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Solmar, California for General Maintenance, Project Number 22-05. Item 17, annual renewal payment of Hawthorne Hosted Tyler Technology Enterprise ERP software suite formerly Munis in the amount of 114,575.8. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item seven through 17?
I'll pull, I'll pull item 12?
I'll move.
Second. I mean, I'm pulling item 12 for discussion.
Okay, everything else can go.
Yeah. Item seven through 11?
I made a motion, Montero second.
On everything else?
Yep.
Yeah, all right, go ahead. Please vote.
One moment. The votes are in? The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right. I make a motion on item 12?
I'll second.
Please vote.
The votes are in? The voting reflects council voting yes, mayor voting no.
Okay. Let's move on to the city attorney's calendar.
Thank you, council colleagues.
City Attorney's Consent Calendar. Item 18, claim for false arrests and use of excessive force by Ubong Edem. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council deny the claim of Ubong Edem. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item 18?
I move.
Second.
Please vote. Please vote, guys. Everybody voted?
Need Angie's vote? The votes are in? The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. Elected officials reports, city treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I am pleased to report that I had spoken with the Bank of the West again recently. I was requesting another interest rate increase for our money market account. And it has been approved and it will be backdated, effective June 1st to 4%. So I was asking them to match the current LAF rate. LAF right now is yielding 5.3. So I tried to get as close as we could. So we agreed on 4%. So I was really happy about that. And that was up from last year's request that I made twice that they increase our money market account. So I don't know if any of you know, like, the current saving, average savings account rate is at .24. Average money market rates are at .60. Some banks, depending on the amount of money in your account, can yield up to 5%. I am saying all this to say is that your money and your bank, banks work for you. So please, I always advise anyone to call and ask and request interest rates increase, increases, because the banks can do that for you. It is your money and banks do work for you. So please don't ever be intimidated. Always ask for interest rates increases. They can do them. I wanted to welcome Legal Shield to the chamber. I am a member of Legal Shield and they do provide very great legal services for low cost. And they do provide services, so a lot of other services as well. So welcome to the chamber for them. I enjoyed seeing everyone at Juneteenth. I had a I had a great time, and it was a really nice, warm day. So thank you to everybody that came out to Juneteenth. Congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim Manning for earning her crown and her award at the California Black Women Trailblazer Awards. I was there that night, so congratulations. That was good to see. Great job to Felice and the Finance Department on preparing the budget and the city manager. That is a lot of hard work taking that on. So thank you for your work, and thank you to all the employees that had to come out and help, support, and provide and work at Juneteenth on Saturday. Your hard work is never unseen, so thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Good night.
Thank you. City clerk?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. Want to congratulate our staff, Montero, council member Montero, the city manager, for putting together a fantastic Juneteenth event. It was really nice to see everyone come out on such a beautiful day. Want to also thank Fay Johnson and the Veterans Commission for a fabulous ceremony that just took place right before this council meeting. I will be adding to the banner my late ex-husband, who is, who was a veteran. And I also want to say happy birthday, belated birthday, to council member Patterson. He celebrated a birthday. And happy Father's Day to all the dads, including Mr. Norris and council member Patterson, and to all the dads out there. And that's pretty much it for me. I have to give a shout-out to my grandson who is watching today, Hello Nico Hunter, and to everyone else in my family. Just really want to really say thanks to the Veteran Commission. It means a lot to have those banners hanging up, and I'm really looking forward to seeing my late ex-husband, his banner in Hawthorne as well. Thank you, guys, so much.
Council member David Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, want to thank the community for coming out and just participating in this process and sharing your feelings and, you know, listening to what's happening in your city. It definitely makes a meeting a better meeting when you guys are here. It's great to see, you know, all these great faces, people that come on a regular basis and some that are kind of new. Definitely encourage you to bring your friend, all right, to the next council meeting and make sure they understand what's happening in their, in their community. We had a great Juneteenth event. Want to congratulate council member Montero for working with staff to organize a great event. Has a great track record of putting together these great community events, and that everybody appreciate it. Want to congratulate the Veterans Commission for putting together this banner program here in the City of Hawthorne. I know there's a lot of residents that are excited about it and appreciate the recognition. I was here yesterday evening, taking pictures of the banners and all that stuff and posting it on social media. They just came out very well. They're gorgeous. Want to thank Mr. Jarrett for coming out, talk about the bids. Hopefully, we can do some more investigation as to how that could potentially help our city, and I'll continue to work to bring some mini economic development opportunities to our city as we can and, you know, pursue those goals that we all have of making our city a destination city. I had a gentleman reach out to me today who was concerned about the safety of a street, his street. And so, Mr. City Manager, could you have staff look into this? He lives on Corn Bloom. He says near the railroad track is an alleyway that people speed down. Almost saw a kid get hit. I don't know that area off the top of my head, but if we could kind of look. He says Corn Bloom kind of runs into the railroad track.
That is an alley there.
Yeah, we can kind of look into that and, you know, let us know what the next steps are, you know, if a petition is required or to do a study or, you know, somebody take a look at it and kind of see, see what needs to be done. I want to congratulate staff on all your hard work. Appreciate the budget you guys put together, being great stewards of the city's finances, putting together a budget that allows us to grow, but also allows us to put more money in the bank. I want to thank the rest of my council colleagues as well for, you know, your contributions and making sure we put together not just a balanced budget, but a budget with a surplus and we continue to see our cash balance grow. And so definitely continue to work to help see that grow even more. So thanks a lot, everybody.
Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming today, and also at home, people listening to us. First, I want to say, you know, thank you to all the staff, all the department, because I know that to create a budget, it takes a lot of hours of work. And I think they've been working on this budget for almost six months, so to make sure that everything looks good to us when they present it to us. So thank you for all the hard work, you know, the Finance Department, Vaughn, city manager, and all the head departments that come together to show the leadership that make the city is going forward and with the surplus. So thank you very much for that. So that's the first thing I want to say, thank you. Second, you know, to the Veterans Commission, thank you again for all those beautiful banners. They actually were much beautiful that I, you know, anticipated. So thank you for that, and I think it is a great honor, you know, for us to honor all the veterans and those have served the military, current and even active members and those who passed away. So, you know, very moving stories of those veterans that who died to serve this country for us to join the liberty and freedom that we have today. So thank you very much for that. I want to say, you know, thank you for all the new businesses coming to Hawthorne. So it's good, because as you see, you know, our surplus is thanks to the proper, you know, property tax, OT, you know, the trans-oriented tax, all the hotels. So thank you for people to come to Hawthorne and do business and shop in Hawthorne. So that's what we need to do, you know, make sure people shop in Hawthorne, because sales tax is very important to us. I want to say again, for the Juneteenth, it's not just me, council Montero, but it was a team of planning committee that, you know, from Vaughn's to the Community Service Department, to the Public Works, to the Housing Department, engineer, all of us working together to make sure that the Juneteenth was a success. So I want to say thank you for all of those who came to participate on it. I know some few people were kind of disappointed, but I promise that next year will be better, and I'll take those criticisms into consideration. So, but I think it was a lovely day. It was hot, but people came in enjoying themselves. So thank you again, my planning committee, for putting the Juneteenth together. And I want to say thank you to all the other dignitaries that came to celebrate with us, like Congresswoman Maxine Waters, Senator Stu Bradford, Assemblywoman Tina McKenney, the, even the mayor of Longdale stopped by. So it was pretty good to see everybody there and enjoying themselves. So I want to say thank you. I just want to let you know that this last Friday, I spent six hours at USC in a board retreat for the Clean Power Alliance, the provider that is providing us with the clean and renewable energy. So a lot of good things are coming. They're going to give some money to force to electrification our new city hall, potentially. So we're talking about maybe two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to help us out with the making that is clean and renewable, and maybe some other money coming for our fleets, like we can transform all our cars and utility, all the public works, maybe to become electrification, to do more clean and renewable, maybe hydrogen and some other potential benefit to the environment. So the Clean Power Alliance is working for you to make sure that our environment is clean and our, we hope that the new city hall be completely electrified. So everything will be clean, clean renewable energy, no fossil fuel into the new building. And also, you know, for the, for the solar panels. So keep looking, because they're going to give some grants to the residential and also even for EV chargers, okay? There is a lot of incentive out there to put EV chargers or even to put some type of transformer in your garage, you know, to plug your electric vehicle that you might buy one day. So look into those. And, Mr. Mayor, if you can do me a favor, if you can adjourn, adjourn the meeting on, because Jerry Flores' son died. Dean Joseph Florrie was only fifty-seven years old, so he passed away. And, you know, Jerry Flores has been very instrumental in the Little Leagues, helping a lot of young kids, you know, in the Little Leagues baseball. So his son died, so if you can adjourn in his memory, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Angie Reyes English? Councilwoman, please.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Let me just first recognize all of those that came today to council to provide their presentations and to speak on concerns that they may have. I want to publicly make mention and thank Selena with Public Works Department for reaching out to public services and her efforts to address any residents' concerns. So thank you, Selena, for that, and look for some resolve, which I know you will work on greatly. Thank you, council member, for the Juneteenth event. I received calls. They said they had a great time. Unfortunately, I was under the weather, and I had to stay out of the sun because I had gotten too much sun in the past week. I understand that it was an amazing family event with a wide and diverse and inclusive opportunity for families to enjoy themselves. And thank you so much for the committee for their hard work in making sure that the event was a success and to all of those that participated, including our elected officials. Thank you for that. I also would like to, um, let's see, make mention of a couple of things here. I want to thank our city council leaders, councilman Montero, councilmember Patterson, and councilmember Katrina Manning. I want to thank City of Manager Vaughn Norris. Kudos to Dulce with our homeless services outreach and Telehealth Van, who will continue services in reaching out to the unhoused community and those with mental health needs and behavioral health services, along with Venice Family Clinic for their operations here in Hawthorne, delivering services to adults and Medicaid patients. I want to thank Dulce again for the housing navigation that she provides, document readiness, snacks and hygiene, and assistance for case management. These are things that we know we need in Hawthorne, and without it, we would fail. So thank you so much for today's vote to assure that we have telehealth services providing those programs and services to the community at large. I would also like to make mention, Vaughn, if you could bring back to us at our next council meeting, I'd like to make a resolution to proclaim City of Hawthorne Drome Day. I understand we had a huge drone event here in the City of Hawthorne. A lot of great response and comments regarding that, drone day here in Hawthorne. Thank you, chief and police, for your efforts to showcase drone surveillance in Hawthorne. Appreciate that. I would also like to bring back to the city council and to look into, Vaughn, if you would please, for translation services. It's time that the City of Hawthorne becomes bilingual and provides services to those that aren't able to communicate. And I want to make sure that there is wide participation at city council through translation services, especially to IT services. If you could look into the Woody program, it's a system that is being used by current cities to provide translation services. Again, we need to come to full circle to realize that we need more participation. There's intimidation. There's folks that feel their voices are not heard because they feel that they can't speak or articulate well enough to, to speak on concerns and things that they might want to address the council. So doing so, I think it's going to be helpful to those who need translation services, especially when we have folks that come to the podium and want to speak in Spanish. It's incumbent that we find a translator for the individual versus the council member trying to interpretate or translate due to conflicted matters. And so I'd like to see that happen through a third party. I would also like to thank city attorney. Thank you for providing me, and I hope other council members look into the status of them all. Appreciate that. I want to thank our Veterans Affairs Commission for your efforts to bring our banners. I think that's an awesome way of thanking our servicemen and women. Look forward to the continued rollout of those that want to participate by hosting a banner for their loved ones or possibly themselves. Look forward to that. Thank you to Wreckin Parks for everything that you're doing at our Wreckin Parks, concerts and movies in the park. There's a Friday, July twenty-six event. There's a senior farmer's market trip on July twenty-sixth. There's a Hawthorne Business Connect, and I can't say enough of Business Connect. Let me tell you, Business Connect is doing some great things in bringing ribbon-cutting ceremonies to the city, but more importantly, holding hands with those that want to do business in the City of Hawthorne and assuring that they have a smooth transition with regards to getting the permitting and those uses done in an effective and quick manner so that they could become open and provide services to the City of Hawthorne. One in particular is our Rose Crans Veterinarian Clinic, which I had an opportunity to open, and kudos to them. A family, a lovely family, offering veteran services here in Hawthorne. The Summer Sports Camp, that registration opens May sixth. I know that that's already going. However, that's a great program. Zumba classes, I can't say enough, Wreckin Parks, you're doing awesome work. Self-defense Safety Awareness Classes, the twelfth, June twelfth through September eleventh. Again, Movies in the Park, July twelfth. Again, Movies in the Park, July nineteenth. And our Hawthorne Police Family and city employees. There's a Saturday, June twenty-ninth Beach Day. I know there's great excitement. I know our staff are working and making goodie bags for families. It's going to feature the famous HP, HPD barbecue. It's Beach Day Employees and Family. That's going to be June twenty-ninth from ten to five P.M. at Dock Wyler Beach, Tower Fifty-Eight. There's a great beach schedule, including a bike ride, a group bike ride, balloon toss competition. And I look forward to participating. I just want to see how I could get my bike transported over to the beach. Hint, hint, if anybody can help me with that. But anyway, that would be a great, a great, you know, ride right there, you know, traveling along the beach and riding a bike. But I look forward to all of that. I can't say enough, Felice, for your leadership in the Finance Department to bring us a solid budget, and Vaughn, for your leadership, you know, collectively with all our city departments that work hard each and every day. I, I, I keep looking at the new city, you know, slogan, our new, our new city pin. Yeah. And it, it looks awesome. I hope everyone, you know, can take some time to just take some pictures and post it and thank our city social media pages. We need a lot of folks to just like everything that we're doing here in the City of Hawthorne, because we are doing a lot of great things, all the paving, everything. So give yourselves a hand. We got a fiscal budget that is, you know, one to be proud of. So thank you so much, everyone, for what you're doing, and especially our ladies with Business Connect. Couldn't be prouder. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim, Katrina Manning?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, sorry I was under the weather, and I was unable to attend your Juneteenth event. I've heard that it was a lovely day, and sorry I was unable to be a part of that. The other thing that I want to mention is the chief and his staff. Do you guys actually go to sleep? Because I tell you, every time I'm riding around town, I see you guys doing great work. And I'm always wondering if I'm going in the morning and then I'm coming at night, at what point are you guys actually sleeping, especially you? I see you a lot. And so I'm just wondering, chief, are you giving them any time off to rest? But you guys are fabulous. You guys are fabulous, and you're doing a great job. And I just want to say I appreciate you. I see you, and I literally see you all the time, doing great work. So thank you so much. Truly appreciate the work. And please, chief, let them get some sleep. Also, I want to say thank you to Fay. My husband is, is up there, and I've taken pictures, and I've shared it with pretty much everybody in the world, bragging. And it came out amazing. The pictures are so well done, and thank you for coming up with that idea. It's beautiful how we're honoring our veterans, and I'm just so grateful. And my husband is so proud, so I'm bragging to everybody. Go look at my husband. Also, Vaughn, I just wanted to get an update on the program for Edison about the backup power generator or the solar panel for the blackouts. If you can give me an update on asking them to provide something for our residents because we're continuing to have blackouts. And I feel like it's going to be a hot summer. And, you know, a refrigerator going out, and I have a portable air conditioning. So if that thing goes out, oh my God, it's going to be so hot. So definitely, if you can look into that. That's going to do it for me tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations, Katrina, on your honoring.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, folks, so I joined the city and my councilmember colleagues at the Juneteenth event that took place on Saturday. Great event. To me, I thought it was a great amount of people there. So personally, I thought that it was, I don't know who may have mentioned otherwise, but I thought it was well-attended. And as I said, Juneteenth gets thrown out there as a, you know, hey, you should know about Juneteenth, but people are, there's a lot of people who are still learning about it. And I think events like this educate everybody as to what the meaning is and the history behind it all. What happened in Texas where up to two years after the Emancipation Proclamation after the Civil War ended, people over there were kept in the dark, not knowing that they were free. So they were being taken advantage of for an extra two years for, you know, under slavery. So I think it's important to know and share that history. There's probably a heck of a lot more details than just that, right? So it'd be good to know. And I saw a lot of elected officials from the state and my fellow colleagues that were there at different times. So it's good to see everybody there. The banners were, you know, awesome, something that I seen in other cities and said, hey, you know, why don't we have this here? And I know that Councilwoman Olivia Valentine, you know, that was on her horizon, and she, and I guess we both at separate times talked to the city manager, and it came to fruition in this last couple of years. And Fay Johnson, thank you for leading the charge along with your colleagues on the commission to be able to put that forward. One of the things that I was thinking and we saw, I kind of was able to take a look at the samples compared to other cities. I feel that what we have up there compared to other cities is awesome. The color scheme, the size of the image that we have up for each of the service members is beautiful. The contrast is wonderful. So if you drive down the street, you could see that very clearly. Other cities have like their rank and their name really small and, you know, different details. You can't even know what like service branch they're from. Most of those other ones, and I can tell you that these that we have right here are pristine, well-designed. I think the proofs were, there was like four or five proofs until they got it right, or we got it right, or whoever participated in that. So my dad is up there also, so he was a service member during the Vietnam War. So my dad was a specialist, I guess. Yeah, US Army during '67 and '68. So it's good to see my dad up here. It's good to see my colleagues, my husband up there and members of the audience, their relatives up there. So now that people see this, we better start getting prepared because I'm pretty sure a lot of people are going to inquire on how this happens. And my council colleagues, please make sure you, who are we going to refer them to? In case they call Mr. City Manager and are interested in having this, so we can fast-track stuff?
There's two ways to get that done. You can contact the HR department during working hours, or they can come to a Veteran Commission meeting and inquire through the commission.
All right, so just make everybody up here and everybody in the audience, make sure you know where to send them to. I think it sounds better if we just send them to the HR department, one central location, right? So. Yep. Okay. One thing, I want to let you guys know that I attended the National Association of Latino Elected Officials meeting in Las Vegas. It was a great meeting with a lot of different topics, seminars, et cetera. I was privileged to have been selected and nominated and selected to be part of the National Board for the Association, so I'm really happy about that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And it's the first time somebody from Hawthorne, actually, it's the first time somebody from the South Bay has been on there. So, I mean, whatever, I don't care if it was me or anybody else, but as long as we have some representation from this corner of LA County, I think it's pretty cool, right? So anybody who, my colleagues or anybody out there, you guys feel should be part of this organization, please let us know. It was really awesome meeting. And also attending was Councilwoman Angie Reyes English and a council member and the city manager Vaughn Norris, who represented us very well over there. So it was a great, it was a great event. I mean, you don't know how many contacts we made over there. So many, so many contacts, resources. So the issues are not just Latino-based. They're issues that prepare us as Latino elected officials to serve our whole community. Okay, so that's one of the things that I just wanted to highlight and let you guys know. So it was pretty cool, really enjoyable. So I guess there's nothing else. Instead of adjourning, because we have like two closed sessions, I want to have a moment of silence for Dean Joseph Fleury at this point. Are you okay with that, Councilwoman Montero? If we can have a moment of silence in his honor, he's passed away. Okay, may he rest in peace. One of the things I also wanted to mention, let's see, what's the date for your event? Verbena? La fecha? September 15th. Make sure you put that on your calendar. I must, I mean, it's a Sunday, right? Sunday, September 15th, we have the Verbena, the Cuban festival that we call it, the Cuban party that we have over there at the Jose Marti Club. September 15th, put that on your calendar. I think it's really cool that we have Beach Day for the employees. I'm going to pull out my bike also, and I'm going to challenge Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to ride out there, ride out there with me along Imperial Highway till we get over there. It's not that far. It's not that far, Councilwoman. It is, it is, it is kind of, it is a tough ride.
I could get my bike out there.
Okay.
Careful what you ask for.
You guys hear what I said? Ride it from Hawthorne over there, not get it on a car.
No, I didn't say Hawthorne. I said get my bike over there.
Or wherever it is. Also, I just, we have three separate flyers. I would like for you guys to promote the concerts in the park, concerts along with movies in the park, so back-to-back. The concerts, it's something like I told you guys previously, something I've seen in other cities that they do. The things that other cities do, maybe more inland, maybe it's in the South Bay somewhere. But there's just so many things we can have for our community that don't cost a lot. It doesn't have to be a production. It doesn't have to be a major event. Try to minimize our costs and just basically bring you out there and just do some good old-fashioned, what do you want to call it? Just grassroots type of fun.
Family event, yeah.
Yeah, family fun. So the first one is going to be on July 12, Friday. We're going to have an 80s pop band. Well, I want to ask for some Tina Turner, what else? Some Michael Jackson or whatever the heck you guys want, a Culture Club. So I'm pretty sure they're going to play some good stuff. And followed up with that is going to be the movie Migration. Then on July 19th, Friday, you're going to have a disco funk band. So we're going to hear some like, what, Atomic Dog or something? Or what? Some funky music out there, right? And then we have Kung Fu Panda IV right after that. And every single one of these, I'm going to be there, dancing at each one. But the last one is, which is on Friday, July 26, we're going to have the band Dreaming of You, which is a Selena tribute band. So it's going to be, that one's going to be pretty fun. It's going to be pretty fun, cute. Come on out to that. And we're going to have the movie Trolleys Band Together. I don't know about these. The kids know about these movies, right? So they should be pretty cool. So 12th, 19th, and 26th. We'll see you guys out there, okay? What else? What else? What else do we got right here? We'll proceed with the closed session. Madam Clerk?
Item 19, Conference with Labor Negotiations, Subdivision A of Section 54957.6 of the California Government Code. Name of Labor Negotiators: City Manager Vaughn Norris and Human Resource Director Erica Lampkin, Hawthorne Police Management and Supervisory Group, HPMSG.
Wonderful. Sir?
And I have an item to add to the agenda pursuant to Government Code, Section 54954, subsection 2.
Where is this on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda. The Government Code allows it when the council votes by a vote of four out of five, out of five members, that this item came to the attention after the agenda was submitted and that it's, immediate action is necessary. It's regarding the same labor negotiation but for HPOA, Hawthorne Police Officers Association, and that action is immediately needed because we need to have this conferred with the council before the new fiscal period, July 1st.
Okay.
And we need approval of adding this agenda item by a vote of four out of five of the council.
I'll make a motion to add to this night, tonight's agenda.
Could we do it orally?
By short hands?
That's, I think that's simple enough.
That's fine.
Interjection.
That's by unanimous vote.
Okay.
Perfect. Item 20, Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54956.8, 54954.5B. Properties approximately 1.49 acres of land located at 3136 West Rosecrans Avenue, Hawthorne, California, 90250, APN 4071-020-001, APN 4071-020-002, APN 4071-020-003, APN 4071-020-005, APN 4071-020-004, and APN 4071-013-025. City Negotiator Von Truenor, City Manager, negotiating parties, Keller Williams Realty, John Hanley, under negotiation, price and terms of payment.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so I'll declare all communications closed or ordered on this item. We will now recess. Are we, so we have both of these? We got both of them, right? We can do them successively? Successively, right? Okay. If, okay, so.
We could do it all together in a closed session, take all three items, and then I'll report out afterwards on all three.
Is there any member of the public? Okay, so nobody wants to speak on this? We will now recess. The city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 7:44. We are in recess.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of section 12.04.031 is also available from the City Clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
Then, the application will be sent to the Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The City Manager and finally the City Attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note, if your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know, business tax certificates expire December thirty-first and renew annually January first to thirty-first. Taxes paid after January thirty-first will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the licensing office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The city does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
On March 8th, City of Hawthorne's Public Works Department will convert 126th Street, between Hawthorne Boulevard and Gravelia Avenue into a one-way street. Vehicles will only be allowed to travel westbound.
That means that instead of the 22 current on-street parking spaces, there will now be 46. Twelve of those will be, um, no permit, uh, needed to park. The remaining 34 spaces will be permit parking.
Permitted parking will be for city employees during business hours. Between the hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, to help aid parking at City Hall. The proposed change was presented to City Council by Public Works and was approved at the February 13th Council meeting.
City Hall is expanding and, um, there's a lot of new employees that are working at City Hall. So in order to alleviate some of the parking concerns, we decided to convert 126th Street, um, into one-way with angled parking.
Due to the upcoming City Hall expansion project, where an additional building will be added to City Hall, and the current City Hall parking lot will be under construction, employees needed another location to park. No street access will be available on the 8th of March due to the construction, but will reopen the following day.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12 dot zero four dot zero three one pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of section 12 dot zero four dot zero three one is also available from the City Clerk's Office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
How to obtain a business certificate in the City of Hawthorne? First, check to make sure you have fulfilled all state and county business requirements such as becoming a legal entity, acquiring an EIN number, registering your business with the Secretary of State, obtaining any specialty licenses or permits, etc. To obtain a business tax certificate in the City of Hawthorne, check local zoning regulations. Come to the Business License Office for the business license or tax certificate packet. There's also a downloadable version online at www.cithorndotorg/department/finance/licensing/licensing-forms. Submit your completed application to the Business License Office for processing. Please only answer questions that pertain to the type of business you wish to operate. Not all items listed will apply. You may ask who will review your application for approval. The application will first go to the Planning Department to confirm the potential location is zoned for your business type. If you come into the office, you will walk your application to the Planning Office, and they will send you back to Business Licensing if approved to pay for the business tax certificate. If not approved, you are not eligible for a business tax certificate. Options are to move to a properly zoned area or dissolve the business within the City of Hawthorne. Next, the application will be reviewed and approved by our Building and Safety Department. If your business applies, who will contact you to schedule an inspection of the physical property? Follow-up inspections may be necessary. Then, the application will be sent to the Hawthorne Police Department and LA County Fire Department, who will check for issues associated with the address such as excessive calls and more. The City Manager and finally the City Attorney will review what businesses are coming to the city, ensure all proper steps or approvals have been taken, and that there is no pending or past litigation against the proposed business. Upon final approval, a business tax certificate is created and mailed. This document is not given over the counter. Note, if your application is denied by any department involved in the approval process, please follow up with that department directly. What you should know: Business tax certificates expire December 31st and renew annually January 1st to 31st. Taxes paid after January 31st will incur a 25% monthly penalty until 100% is reached. Taxes are based on flat fees or gross sales from the previous year. At renewal time, gross receipts are given. Calculations can result in an adjustment of taxes owed or credited. Please call the Licensing Office when trying to calculate your business tax for accuracy. If you have a credit, it will be applied to the next year's taxes. The City does not accept partial payments. If you do not have a business tax certificate, you may not conduct business in the City of Hawthorne.
Um, at 8:24, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Council met in closed session on three separate items. First is conference with Labor Negotiator on the, uh, the terms of labor negotiation with HPOA. Secondly, with HPMSG, the Council voted unanimously on both items to approve the terms of MOU to be brought back to Council for final approval. Um, with respect to item number 20, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, Montreal for the City, for the address of 3136 West Rosecrans Avenue of 1.49 acres, the, the City Negotiator has been directed by the Council.
Is there anything further from, uh, Councilor staff? If no, the, if no, the City Council meeting is adjourned at 8:25.